Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Javier Botanam, Superintendent of Schools in Portland. And I am excited to kick off the enrollment and facility study work with the first meeting of the Commission tonight. And so I want to thank everybody for their willingness to make the time commitment to this work. It is obviously very, very significant work that we need to do as a district. And so I'm very excited to begin that process today. We are going to -- we have a pretty packed agenda. We're scheduled to end at eight, and we're going to try to hold to that time. So our agenda today will include the introductions that we're going to do, an appointment of the Commission Chair, and review of the objectives for the day, and a conversation about some of our norms and our decision-making process as a group. Then we're going to spend a few minutes looking at the packet materials that you received. As you probably know, there is a lot in there, and I wanted to just walk through what that is and why we included it in there. Then we're going to spend a little bit of time building what we consider to be necessary background for you to be able to do the work that we are going to be attempting to tackle. And then we're going to discuss the timeline that lies ahead of us. So, and then we'll talk about scheduling our next meeting. So before we go any further, let's start with introductions. So what I would ask that you do is, and let's try to stick to the minute because otherwise time will fly. If you can, in a minute, tell us who you are, the organization that you represent, and your hopes for the work of the Commission, why it is that you're here, and what you hope to have the Commission accomplish through its work. So I think I'm going to ask Sheila on that corner over there to kick us off. Good modeling would be great, so I'll start the timer.
Okay. Thanks. Hi, I'm Sheila Jepson. I'm the Principal at Portland High School. And I'm interested in this work. I've been in the district for 13 years and have heard a lot of different conversations around the idea of our facilities, so I'm very interested in this work.
I'm Caitlin McClair, Principal at King Middle School. Also have been in the district a long time, 16 years as an educator. Also sent my daughter K through 12. And so I'm very invested in Portland Public Schools and want to be a part of this conversation.
Hi, my name is Mark Hubbard. I am the Lead Administrative Assistant at King Middle School, and I'm representing the folks that are part of the BASE Union, which is all the support staff for the school district. And I'm interested in being their voice for this and also being the voice for the students, where I'm just finishing my Masters in School Counseling, so interested in writing that voice, too.
My name is Chris Dana. I'm a community member. I'm a Longfellow parent. I have a daughter in first grade, a Longfellow, and a three-year-old who will be going to kindergarten in two years. And I wanted to be interested in this because I just wanted, thought I could bring some objectivity and sort of fact-based decision-making.
My name is Ben Grant. I have two kids at Ocean Ave Elementary School, one in fourth grade, one in kindergarten. The last two years, I was the President of the PTO at Ocean Ave. And in that role, I got involved quite a bit in the budget process last spring, and I'm eager to continue helping out the city, make some good decisions for the students. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Nicole Braden. I am the Co-Chair of the Longfellow PTO and also homeowner on Peaks Island, so I represent both constituencies. I have two kids, a three-year-old and a six-year-old, and have been an educator for over 20 years and feel that this subject is very important and look forward to contributing my experience.
Hi, I'm Marnie Moriarty. I represent District Five on the Portland School Board. This is my 10th year on the School Board, and so I, we've talked about something like this for the entire 10 years I've been on the Board, and we've needed to look at a comprehensive review of our facilities since I began and even before that. So I'm happy to get this work finally started. And I do have two sons, both at Deering, a junior and a senior. Thank you.
Great. I'm Peter Eglington. I'm a parent of a former Portland Public Schools student. She's doing well in college right now. And I have another child that's here as a junior at Casco Bay High School. I also bring experience being active on PTOs. I was on the School Board for a few years on a comprehensive planning steering committee, and then was the Chief Operations Officer for the district for about three years. And my hopes for the work of the Commission is that we, when we're all done, we have a common understanding of the situation, which I would say I'm still learning, both in terms of the constraints and the options that are available, and then agreements on ways to foster sustainability while projecting a positive future for the district.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
So my name's Alicia Gardner. I'm the Executive Director of Budget and Finance for the School Department. I've been here just about two years, and I'm here to ground you in some numbers and to help on the costing side of the work that we're going to do.
I'm Kim Cook. I'm the City Councilor for District Five, which is part of Deering Center, Riverton, and North Deering, north of Allen Ave. And in District Five, we have three of the city's mainland elementary schools, Lincoln, I'm sorry, Liseth, Riverton, and Longfellow. We have two of the middle schools, that's Lincoln and Lyman Moore. Then also, we have Deering High and Casco Bay High, and PATHS all sit within District Five.
Tiana?
Sorry, we're sharing tonight. My name is Tiana Yuri. I am the student representative on the School Board, and tonight I am representing students. And I am super excited to get into this work. I'm really hoping it will bring some evidence base into the budget process as well as transparency and accountability.
Jen Cooper. I work for Portland at their B-side, the Day Treatment Center for Portland Public Schools. I also am a parent. I have a middle schooler at Lyman Moore, so I'm interested in the process for his sake but also to be here to represent the ed tech's voice.
I'm Sue Olafson. I'm President of the Portland Education Association, which is the teachers' union in Portland. I represent over 700 teachers. This is my 22nd year in the district. I have three children that graduated from Portland and Deering, two grandchildren that are in the Liseth Spanish Immersion Program, and my daughter is teaching in the elementary level here in Portland. And I've been a former Longfellow PTO President. My hopes for the work is that we are able to seize the opportunities that can sometimes be found in challenge and maybe even find things that could be really great for the district that otherwise not, might not have been pursued had we not had the pressures of this challenge.
My name is Pious Ali. I'm a City Councilor at large. I served on the School Board for three years before I got on the council. I also work with a lot of families. I hope that by the time we wrap up our work, we are able to work together and put the interest of our students as the focus of whatever we are going to bring out of this. So I'm looking forward to that.
Hi, my name is David Brennerman. I am a community member of this task force. I'm a lifelong Portland resident, attended Portland Schools, had a daughter that also I, in a previous life, was Mayor of Portland and was also City Councilor two different times, including representing District Five until last year, and also was in the state legislature. So I hope that I can learn more about our facilities, programming, and budget, and figure out how they interweave so that we can make educational decisions that are helpful to the city.
Hi, I'm Kevin Brewster. I'm a parent of two high school students at Portland High. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Reiki, where I've been for 15 years. I'm a former lead teacher at Reiki and former Vice President of the PEA. And I'm hoping that this process gives us a good, solid foundation to make the best choices for our kids and families going into the future, knowing that the budgeting process is often fraught, and there's a lot of questions about state funding and issues like that. And I'm hoping that this gives us a solid footing to make our decisions on.
Sarah?
Thank you. I'm Sarah Thompson, School Board Member-at-Large, finishing up my 12th year, going into my fifth term, unless somebody gets written in. I'm a parent of two former Portland Public Schools students. Myself, like Mr. Brennerman, went through K through 12 here in Portland. And I was one of the authors of the resolution to have this come forward because I think every year when I've been on the Board, we've talked about potential savings, and we've looked at sustainability, we've looked at merging with the city on services, et cetera. And I think that the question that always comes up from the council or from the community is, can you consolidate schools? Can you redistrict? Can you close schools? And I think after 12 years of hearing it, we needed to update, we updated once, and we need to update again to answer that question. Last time we did this, the materials didn't show that there was a need to do that. So I think we owe it to our community to answer the question because unfortunately, things are not looking very bright. They're only going to get worse on the state level. And I think it's a community conversation that we need to have and what we want our schools to look like. And I think this will hopefully bring to light what there is that we can or can't do, and we move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. And I think everybody stuck to their minute, so congratulations on doing a great job on that. This is the list of our representatives on the committee, as you can see. And Tiana, you're not on there because we're not sure that you were the representative, but now that you are, we will make sure that we include you on there. But I can only sort of point to the list and say that this is a tremendous group of people, a powerful representation of different perspectives and different, you know, different organizations that are deeply invested in the work of the Portland Public Schools. So I'm extremely excited to have the opportunity to work with all of you. I wanted to start today by letting you know that our Board Chair has appointed Peter Eglington to my right to be Chair of the Enrollment and Facility Study Commission. So from this point forward, we will be tag teaming, but Peter will be the actual Chair of the Commission, and I will work as staff to Peter and to all of you to make sure that you have the right information in front of you to make the decisions that you need to make. So I approached Peter about this a couple weeks ago, knowing the work that he's done, the deep knowledge that he has of the district, and, you know, both as a board member and a staff member as well as as a parent, also know his analytical skills and his ability to lead organizations. And so I was thrilled when Anna asked Peter to take this role, and Peter agreed. And so thank you, Peter, for your willingness to take on this challenge.
I feel like a round of applause is in order. [laughter]
You were going to say something, so I'm going to say something. I'll let you say it.
Well, I was going to say that it's an honor to be here, working on the Commission at all, let alone chairing it, particularly since I know some of you. I don't know all of you, but I have the utmost respect for everyone here. And based on what was submitted for the Commission, I'm really looking forward to working with you on very important work and not easy work. If it was easy, it would have been done by now. So it's, we've got a lot to come, a very short amount of time. In fact, we're one month behind schedule. And, but I know you're all up to the task, and I look forward to helping us do that.
Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to cover? So I'm going to walk through what the objectives are for today. We walked through the agenda, what we're hoping to accomplish. I think Peter spoke to, you know, today, we call this in the project plan Session Zero because it was, it's just formative. It's an opportunity for us to get to know each other. It does not have specific deliverables attached to it. So this is really an opportunity to get to know each other, as we just did, in terms of what the, you know, what the, you know, what we bring to the table, the process for the Commission and so on. So we're going to spend a little bit of time shortly talking about the parameters for the Commission's work and norms and agreements around how decisions will be made. And then we're going to spend a significant amount of time building background knowledge for the work of the Commission, and then spending a little bit of time on the timeline for the work. Councilor Brennerman, I have a ask for you.
Oh. Okay.
So moving to the, to the next slide, it's important to, whenever you have a working group together, agree to certain norms that help guide our conversations. And the norms that are listed in your packet are norms that I've tended to use, so I thought I would put them out there to see whether or not these fit your vision of how you want to work in this group. Some of the, some of the highlights that I wanted to emphasize, I mean, we're starting and ending on time. We started a little late, but we'll aim to end on time today. Assuming positive intent, and that's something that personally I find central to how I approach different individuals. There, no doubt, folks feel strongly about some of the things that might come up during, during our conversations, but realize we've all signed up for this and for positive purposes. So I just wanted to highlight that. Some of the other bullets here are really intended to support the various discussions. And I guess I would ask if anyone had concerns about any of these particular bullets or questions or an important addition that we'd want to include. And I would look around the room for...
The only thing I would say, Peter, is the computers, because a lot of our stuff now that comes through is through Board Docs.
Yep.
So I would say the computers might be vital to the work, so.
Thank you.
I agree with cell phones, but the computers are pretty, as you can see.
Yep.
Important.
So very, thank you for that. The inclusion of off-topic on it is intended to capture some of that. I'm not suggesting that anyone would walk around seeing what you've got on your screen, but the intent would be, if you're using it, it's for a constructive purpose, helping us do our work. Does that help? Does that address that? All right? Any other questions or comments or suggestions? Seeing none, we'll give it a try. And I'm also a believer that if we find that there's a norm that we want to add at any time, we can think about it, consider it then. It's really intended to help us do our work.
So for those of you who attended any of the community meetings or had an opportunity to be a part of the Board's discussions as we were laying out the parameters for the study, this slide is familiar to you, but I thought it would be helpful for us to recap that for everybody today, because not everybody had that opportunity. And it's also just important to ground ourselves in these parameters. So I think the most critical one, because it sort of lets, it sort of frames the conversation, is that first bullet, which is that our goal here is to consider if there are ways to reduce costs for the district by, in some way, rightsizing the district. So that could be, you know, we'll talk about some of the possibilities underneath, but that's the, that's the idea. I think we all recognize that there could be programming options that will result, but those would only make sense if they are, you know, if they're leading to the goal of reducing our costs. So I think it was Sue that talked about there are opportunities in crises, and I believe that, and I'm sure that everybody at this table agrees with that. And so I think that this is an opportunity for us to look at, you know, what are the possibilities, but it has to be in the context of saving resources. If we were, you know, it's the role of the Board, it's the role of the administration to support the Board in making programmatic shifts. And so this would not be the forum to have a conversation if it weren't attached to the notion of potentially having some, some cost reductions. The Board has agreed that our purview is pre-K through 12, so we're not sort of focused exclusively on, you know, one grade span. It's across the board. As a result of that, we could potentially wind up with different configurations of our schools. Our schools are currently configured as pre-K five, middle schools that are six through eight, and nine through 12 high schools. But that's not the only way that schools are organized, and that's not even the way that, you know, schools have always been organized in Portland. So the potential exists from our work to wind up with different configurations. So it could be things like junior and senior high schools. It could be things like a K-8 scenario, or primary buildings, intermediate buildings, and, you know, middle schools and high schools. So those possibilities are all, you know, within, within scope for our work. And, you know, the conversation that I know many people have asked as we went out and did the community forums is, you know, school consolidations and closures could result from this. And I think both Board Member Thompson and Board Member Moriarty talked about the fact that, you know, this is something that the district has heard repeatedly as, you know, different budgets have been brought forward. And so I think it is a discussion that we will have over the course of our work as a, as a group. And then that we'll also, you know, primarily in relation to if, you know, buildings are closed and things, you know, school buildings are closed, are there opportunities to use unused space for some of the things that we currently have other buildings dedicated to? So whether it's our administration building or, you know, the lease for Portland Adult Education, things along those lines, there would be opportunities to look at whether space could be used differently for those, for those entities within the district. So any questions about those parameters? Is that clear to everybody? Questions that you want to pursue further?
Just to clarify, in the programming options piece, I think I remember through the last budget process, looking at numbers for electives, for instance, at the high school level, and some of them overall having sort of average low, and there was some talk about potentially at least exploring options of moving some electives to one school and others to the other, and students would potentially bust back and forth if that's an elective they wanted. Is that, I'm just trying to make sure I understand whether that's something we would be looking at, or is this note about programming options would be secondary, sort of saying, please don't look at programming right now?
No.
Okay.
As long as it is, if it can achieve a cost savings, it would be, it would be in scope. That's a great question.
Other questions? Marnie?
I don't think so, but are we considering at all any other revenue opportunities?
Not as part of this work. It's not to say that it's not important and it's not being pursued in other venues, but it's not, it's not what we're doing here. Great question. Anyone else?
Maybe you've already done this, but has there been a look at the optimal size school, elementary, middle, or high school? In other words, if a middle school only has 400 children, is that the right size for a middle school, or should it be 600, you know?
And so that is part of what we will be doing.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. So...
Do you want to do this? Why don't you, since you're set up?
All right. So when we talked about what are the final product expectations for, for your work, it's ultimately a set of recommendations for the Board to take into consideration. And the parameters for those, for those recommendations should be that it's consistent with the parameters that we just reviewed, so all of those things on the previous slide, obviously, and that they should reflect key considerations that will be presented to the Commission. At our next meeting, we will be reflecting back to you what we heard from the community in the survey and in the community forums that we just completed. So we will, sort of, we will analyze that and present it to you, and those will be the considerations. We've also had individual organizations that have sent us, for example, just today I've received key considerations from the Island Institute. So those are going to be part of the data that you will be looking at, at our, at our meeting number one, which is the next meeting of the Commission. So it would, obviously, that is designed to influence the way that you approach the work. So it's, it's background information. Obviously, we are going to be looking at a significant amount of data over the next few meetings, so it will be, those recommendations will be based on, you know, your collective review and analysis of the data. You will, at some point, have recommendations from our outside consultants on different options based on their analysis of the data. And so, you know, part of your task in making recommendations will be reviewing those against your own, you know, ideas and against the considerations that have been presented to you and making decisions based on that. And ultimately, they will be vetted by the public through a hearing process. And we're going to talk at the end of the meeting about the different meetings up ahead. And so, you know, the final product will have gone through, think of those as filters for the, for the final product. Any questions about that? Any questions about that? Fairly clear? Okay.
So for decision-making, I think at the top level, it's important to understand that we're not the decision-maker in terms of the ultimate outcome of the work that we review and the recommendations that we make. That is entirely within the school board. But I'd like to think that the recommendations will be helpful for getting them to make good decisions. We are a big group and want to acknowledge that. The system that we've set up is that the recommendations will be up for votes of this group, not tonight, no pressure for this evening, by majority vote, and we'll record the names of the individuals who have supported each recommendation. But that we need half of the commission here, at least, as the quorum. And if we don't have a quorum, either we won't be able to pass on recommendations, depends on when this occurs. We'll have to decide what we do if we're in the final stages and we don't have a quorum at that point. But the intent is to have a quorum and vote by majority. Something that's not listed here, but it is something that I would recommend, is that the final report that we put forward, final set of recommendations that we put forward, also capture themes around disagreements. So both that and times that we are not able to make a recommendation. So it could be that the majority feels that the certain items that come up every year, while they sound attractive, aren't supported going forward. I think it's important for the board and the community to know that, that we weren't able to move certain recommendations forward. That doesn't mean that we'll be putting forward minutes. People can always watch the recordings that are being made of our deliberations, but we will do our best to capture the essence of our discussions in the final product. Is that, any questions on the decision-making? Yes?
Do I have voting power in this context?
You do.
You do?
Wow.
For those who don't know why she's asking that question, as a student representative on the board, she does not have an actual vote that counts. So that's senior privileges.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Peter?
Yes?
Can members who can't make a meeting call in, or is that not allowed?
My familiarity with quorums is that you need to be present. And one, but I don't know what the will of the board is these days, or...
So on the board business, a member must be present to vote. They cannot vote by proxy, they cannot vote from afar. Doesn't mean that they won't submit their perspective, but it won't count as a vote in the tally. So if you can't make it, and you, you know, to Peter's point about themes for agreement as well as themes for disagreement, it would be a part of the final report, but it would not be a vote. So if we were in a, you know, tiebreaker situation, that could not be a tiebreaker vote.
Okay. I wasn't even talking about voting. I meant if you can't be at the meeting, but you could listen in for two hours, even if you couldn't vote.
Sure.
Is there a way to do that?
We can set it up via Skype session, and, you know, then you could be a part of it. It will obviously not be as, not be the same as being at the meeting.
Sure.
We can definitely do that.
And you always have the opportunity to view after the fact, if we're not able to work out the Skype details.
Good.
So you won't miss anything. Other questions or comments? Yes?
So, it looks like we're going to be reviewing a lot of data, which I think is great, but will we have the opportunity as a group, or if whatever members would like to go, to go and view our facilities? Because from what I've only seen, a handful of our schools, never seen what the central kitchen or the transportation offices look like. I just wonder if there would be the opportunity for that, so we can provide a little bit of context for ourselves when we're making these recommendations.
It would not be a part of the formal meeting, but we could arrange for that to happen, you know, at any time that's convenient for you and that there are staff around that can lead you through that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Oh, yes. Marnie?
So myself, Ms. Thompson, even other city councilors, we have lots and lots of data from previous studies, from previous discussions. Can any time we bring that into this, or we're only looking at what Davis Demographics does, or what we have in front of us?
No, in fact, that's...
Excellent segue.
Yes. Because we are going to review the packet, and in the packet, there is some information that fits that description. So if you are following along in your own computers and you want to look at the packet, we included a significant amount of information in it, should be up there for you to see that. So, Ms. Moriarty, to your point, the first document in there is the 2009 PPS sustainability Study. So this is a study that was done, obviously, in 2009, looking at a variety of programmatic options, again, at a time that the district was in, you know, similar financial challenge. And it, well, you want to say anything about it since you were on the board when it happened? So my...
So the genesis of this plan was that the school district had identified a significant deficit in the budget, and shortly thereafter, the finance committees of both the school board and the city council came together, developed a joint resolution of calling for a sustainability plan for how we were going to not only get through recovering from the deficit, but plan for a more solid future. It was right about the same time where the state was requiring districts to look at consolidation or other efficiencies. And so the, and I don't remember the amount of time that was available, but the finance committees met multiple occasions, and the superintendent put forward different recommendations, some of which required coordination with the city and other things that the school district could do on its own. And so the report captures some of that, including unresolved issues at that time.
So we also included in here, again, you know, based on the, you know, to the question of things that have already been done. Davis Demographics, and that is the company that actually has the contract for facilitating and assisting us with this process, did a demographic study of Portland Public Schools in 2012, 2013. At the time, for those of you who remember, that was the beginning of the Buildings for Our Future process. And so that study is included in here, and part of the specifications for Davis Demographics in their current study is to sort of do a look back to that report and sort of explain the differences in their projections, what were the variables that they used that did not come true, what are the variables that they used that came true, to explain their, to contextualize their recommendations for the current demographics study. The next item that you have in there is the actual contract with Davis Demographics. So that is for the work that they are facilitating for us. And so for the sake of everybody being on the same page, understanding how much it's costing, and specifically what it is that we can expect to receive as a result, you have the actual contract in there. We just completed a round of 11 community forums, where we had over 200 people from the community come and, you know, hear some of the information that you're going to hear today. And also, we had a structured process for people to provide feedback on a set of questions that are going to then form the basis for those considerations that we talked about, that you are going to hear at the first official meeting, not the first official, the first, you know, meeting number one in the schedule. And so we have included in your packet the actual presentation that we used for that, so that you have all of that, you know, as background knowledge. Next, we have a couple of board workshop packets. Those were the workshops that the Board of Education engaged in that got us to where we are today. So everything from the parameters that you saw, to the contract, and the different options for contracts that we considered, and where we landed with the contract that we currently have with Davis Demographics, the parameters that we currently have, as well as the decision to go out, you know, to create a commission, to have the commission be the commission that's sitting at the table today. All of that was a result of those two board workshops. And so we thought it would be helpful for everybody, because some of you, I know, attended meetings, others did not. So just as a way of making sure that everybody is starting from a common knowledge base, we included that. And then we have a series of examples of the type of data that you can expect to receive over the course of the study. So these are all examples that we reviewed in advance of contracting with Davis Demographics, and that as we meet on a regular basis, to sort of, to continue to work, to move the work forward, that they suggested would be helpful for you, to sort of, to ground you in the kind of analysis that you might see. You'll see some of that analysis also later today when we talk about the budget, some of the work that Alicia is doing as part of the, sort of, the staffing on the costs piece, using some of the templates and data outlays that they would normally produce that we've produced. And so in there is the Butler update. This is a study that they completed recently for a district that's similar to ours in terms of size. And this was their last update prior to actually making decisions. And so you have an example of the types of options that you might see when we get to that aspect of the work. So, you know, when we get into meetings three and four on our agenda, these are the types of options that you can expect to see outlined. Then we also, so there's a couple of other examples from Warren County School District and West Allegheny Recommendations. Again, different districts, different circumstances, but you see the kind of data that you might expect to receive as part of the study. So again, you don't need to read these at, you know, at a very high level of detail, but they're designed to give you an idea of the kind of information that we're going to be dealing with here as we do our work. There's obviously much more that we could have included, and we will be happy to, you know, again, to Ms. Moriarty, to your question, if there's a specific report or prior study that you think would be particularly helpful to the commission as it does its work, we'll be happy to include that and just have the, you know, all of the information in one place where you're able to access it and, you know, understand everything that's happened before.
Just a quick question.
Yes?
And forgive me if this is coming up, but I tried to thumb forward. With the pre-K planning that I know has been going on for some time, I know I, in my inbox is sitting an overview that I haven't had a chance to take a look at yet, is a PowerPoint presentation, I believe, that was given, and I know it's been sent to the council. I'm wondering if this, I think that might be helpful background, and maybe it's coming in one of our upcoming meetings, but as we're looking at potential configuration changes, we may want to be planning for what we think might be coming ahead with pre-K.
So we will definitely update that to the materials. And for those who haven't, you know, who don't, aren't riveted by everything that the school board does every week, we presented to the school board at their last meeting a plan for getting to universal pre-K. The board is going to be resolving whether to move in that direction or not, partly as a result of this work, because moving in that direction has space implications as we begin to look at our current facility use as well as our projected facility use. So I think that that's why we, that had always been in scope for the board, and we had talked about, you know, bringing back recommendations after, you know, there was an extensive process that carried over the course of this past year with some research work as well as community engagement. And so now we knew that we were going to bring that to the board in the fall, and we've sort of accelerated it so that we can have that included in the specifications as we look at facilities use. So we will definitely add that to the background materials.
And it may already be what Davis Demographics says are already incorporated, but I had requested having the city planner to know about the city plans for Portland to be also overlaid with our plans.
They have that.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, I was wondering, I don't know if this is relevant, but are there any materials here about the state side? Just because I know that on the commission, everybody has the same level of experience with the state side of the budgeting, and I think it would be relevant to our work.
A perfect segue.
Great segue, Tiana.
We noticed that everybody up here has had an appropriate segue, so we're all thinking like a team already. So let's go back to our presentation, and we're going to walk through the budgeting aspects, everything from the state perspective to what we actually expect to see for this coming year. So these are our objectives for today. Oh, I'm sorry. That people can see that? Okay. So these are the objectives, and Alicia and I are going to share portions of this. We want you to have the larger context of our financial situation, both state funding and particularly the impact of our community's valuation and, you know, the current, past, and future tax years as, you know, part of grounding us as a group to be able to do our work. Alicia's going to walk through the 2020 budget projections. This is information that she shared last week at the board's finance committee, and the board's finance committee thought it would be important for the commission to actually have that same information as you begin to do your work. And then we have a sort of a retrospective look at our costs as a district from 2009 to 2018. And, you know, this came up in one of the community forums. It seems like an odd mix of years, and it really is grounded in our data. Our finance system was put in place in 2009, so that's the only place where we can readily do the comparables that we've, that we'll see today. And then we'll also, and this is also a part of what was shared in the community forum presentations, a bit of grounding in, you know, how do we compare to other districts around the state and particularly in our region? So that's all attempting to build background that you need to be able to do the work that we're asking you to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia.
Okay. So we've discussed this, I know we had a community forum last year to talk about valuation and how it was growing in Portland. And this is something I talked to the city's assessor, Christopher Huff, and the city's finance director, Brendan O'Connell, on a fairly regular basis about... finance director, Brendan O'Connell, on a fairly regular basis about the difference between state valuation and the local valuation. So, what we're going to talk about today is the state equalized valuation, because that's how our education subsidy is derived, is from the state valuation. And so, essentially, every year, our EPS, which is our, the money we get from the state is built on kind of two big factors, the number of students you have and your local community's valuation. And for FY 2020, it will be based on the 17 and 18 valuation. It used to be based on three years, now it's based on two years. So, we already know what that is, so we've known since last year what the next year's, what the current year upcoming valuation is, but the 2019 valuation just came out, which will affect us in 2020. So, some of these slides are from last year. And the new valuation's about $9.7 billion. It grew by 7% in one year. And if we project that it will keep going even at 5%, it's going to cause a significant shift in local responsibility on the state side. So, that's what we're going to talk about a little bit right now. Let me go to the next slide. So, this is just, I think, a really good visual to understand that naturally, costs are going to increase where 80% salaries and benefits, those escalate on an annual basis. So, that's that yellow line, we're going to see a shift up. This is sort of steady state, if things stay the way that they are right now, we don't make any major changes. And that black line's really the amount that the state's going to pay for. So, that's going to keep going down because our valuation is going up. So, you can see that that pie is getting bigger and bigger. So, that's sort of what we're here to talk about today. So, there's a lot going on on this slide, so I apologize. But really, this slide is telling you what our valuation was subject to the mill rate that the state sets. Now, what the mill rate is, is essentially the value that the state sets times your local valuation to come up with how much of the education your town is responsible to pay for. So, just as a grounding for this last year, FY 2019, you can see it's the third row down. The state said that the Portland's minimum education budget should be $87 million, and based on our valuation of about $8.25 billion, they said that we have to pay for just under $70 million of that. So, if you take that 87 minus 70, we saw about $17 million in state subsidy this year. Now, last year, there was a fairly big shift in the formula, so we actually saw a pretty big increase on the allocation side. We saw just about as large of an increase on the local share side, so we had to actually pay for a lot of that increase ourselves last year. So, last year was kind of like a level set. We don't anticipate there's going to be a lot of formula changes this year, so any increases in our total allocation will likely just be incidental based on accumulator. So, what I used is 1.5% for most of these calculations, just assuming the state says, you know, we're going to apply an accumulator of about 1.5%. It likely won't be less than that, it might be slightly more. So, based on my handy-dandy six-page Excel formula, I said that we're going to get about $88.3 million next year, and that's based on the current enrollment that we have, our current staffing, and those kind of accumulators that I just said that I increased about 1.5%. But what you'll notice is, we also know our valuation, and it went up by $500 million over last year. And if we keep our mill rate the same, so that's assuming the state says that the local taxpayers don't need to pick up any more of the cost, which on the flip side, just so you know, means that the state's going to pick up the additional cost, so that's sort of a big leap. That would mean that Portland is going to have to pay about $4.5 million more dollars towards the local valuate, the local subsidy this year. So, you'll notice that 17.3 drops to 13.9. So, then, we also know what the FY 2021 valuation is going to look like, and you'll see that that went up about $600 million. Again, if the mill rate stays flat, and I'm going to guess that that's also not going to happen, we are going to owe $79 million in our operating allocation, again, will only go incrementally up. So, we'll see about a $3 million drop in the next year, and then so on and so forth. You can read that last line. So, we wanted to do that to just kind of level set you on if sort of the mill rate doesn't change. I don't expect that the mill rate is not going to change, it's going to go up. So, that factor in which the local expectation rises is going to be higher than that. So, it's just, it's really important to, even no matter how many students you have, we're adding, you know, 50, 100 students a year, it's not going to offset the sharp rise in valuation that we're seeing in Portland.
Can you explain in a little more detail what you meant when you said the state dramatically changed its formula this past year?
Yes.
And why we don't think that would happen again?
So, they, so there's a couple of things that happened. I don't think it'll happen again this year, because even though either way, we're going to have a new governor, there's not going to be enough time to drastically sort of change that formula that's coming out. And that generally comes out of the governor's office, that formula. So, last year, things that happened that were different. So, Portland gets 100% of their career and technical education funding from the state. Now, we didn't used to do that. So, that sort of drastically increased the formula and offset in other places on our budget that we didn't see that revenue anymore. Our state subsidy for special education went up fairly significantly last year. They started to apply costs in a different way. We got actually a lower kindergarten student-to-teacher ratio last year, which meant we got more credit for our teachers, so that was good, that raised the overall numbers that we were seeing. There were some targeted assistance for, again, pre-K and K numbers that we saw last year that didn't happen the year before. So, there was just, it wasn't a new formula, but there were tweaks that sort of raised the overall value. The state also, you only used to give us 90% of that total value, or 97%, and last year, it went up to 100%. So, they used to calculate the total and say, yeah, we can't really afford the total, we're going to give you 97% of that. And this year, they went up to 100, so that sort of raised that bar again. But I don't think that we're going to see that drastic number of changes in this next coming year, so it'll likely be the same formula with just accumulators applied.
Do we have any sense of, two years out, whether, I mean, I'm just trying to see how much assumptions are built into our future projections on state funding?
So, we can certainly say what we hope would happen. We would, I think, hope that they would go back to a three-year average evaluation as opposed to a two, but our valuation is, that would just lower the increase as opposed to really help us out.
And are all those determinations, the executive branch or the legislature?
Legislature.
Legislature.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you explain why the valuation numbers are different in this table than two charts before we got there?
So, in this valuation table, they're averaged for the previous two years, and I think the valuation numbers here are just the one-year number. So, really, that 2019 number, I believe, is really for FY 2019. It's not really the valuation in 2019. So, it's one year.
So, on the other chart, it said in 2020, the valuation will be $9.7 billion, but here, it doesn't even mention $9.7 billion.
Because 2021, where there's that asterisk, is actually a combination of the previous two years. So, some of these were projections. So, I think that 2021 is an average of the 9.7 and the 9.0. So, it's about halfway in between, it's about 9.35.
So, this doesn't recognize possible downturn in the economy in Portland?
It does not at this time, no.
Okay. So, our valuation, because of whatever reasons, more construction here than anywhere else in the state?
So, the only year that we are, actually don't know right now, is the valuation for the state year 2020, which will affect fiscal year 2022. Every other year is known right now.
Okay. Thanks.
So, that's just to kind of ground us in, if nothing changes from right now, what does it look like? So, that unfortunately is, I think, best-case scenario. So, let's talk about just this year coming up. So, we expect our local expectation calculation, because of our valuation, to rise by $4.4 If the mill rate stays flat, like I just said, that would be a loss of about $3.4 million state aid. If the mill rate increases by 1%, that local expectation jumps to $5.2 million, and it's a loss of $4.1 million. And if it increases by 3.5%, which is what it increased by last year, that local expectation increase will be $7 million, and we'll lose about $6 million in state subsidy. So, that's sort of how drastically tied in those valuation numbers are.
I know this was a question that was raised a lot at the forums, was, I assume there's an answer, but if the state's thinking that the valuation's going up, is there not more revenue coming in through property taxes?
So, there hasn't been a revaluation in Portland for a while. I do know in this year's budget, they have planned to start doing that, but even if they start a revaluation right now, it won't be active until next fiscal year, so for FY 2021. So, this coming year, we won't have captured that value quite yet. It doesn't mean it won't sort of level set in the future, but it won't happen for this year, this upcoming budget year.
I just want to, I don't know how these work. I just want to understand, there's no buttons or anything.
Just talk into it.
All right.
It's all live.
Great. The mill rate is not the local mill rate that you're talking about?
Correct.
It's the state mill rate?
The state mill rate.
I've been having a hard time understanding, because I'm used to thinking of the mill rate as what?
Correct.
We deal with at budget time?
Yep.
And this is a state mill rate?
Yes.
That we have no ability to control. It's whatever the state?
Correct.
The legislature decides the mill rate is.
Correct. So, what happens is, for all, for the entire state, the state determines the local cost of education. So, that could be, you know, $2 billion. And then, they kind of figure out the flip side is, how much money do they have? And the difference is sort of the amount of money needed to be raised by towns, and then they essentially divide that by the statewide valuation to come up with a millage rate that the local towns are going to have to chip in to kind of offset that, to raise the rest of that amount. So, that's how they come up with it, in a very basic manner, but that's much more complicated, I'm sure.
And if I could just add that, on the city council, we've dealt a lot with this question about how if there's more value in Portland, then we should be having a lot more property taxes coming in, and hence, our budget would be bigger, and unfortunately, I wish the line were straight like that, and it isn't. And I won't go into it right now, but I think we could, I know the city manager in last year's budget wrote up a description of how much additional value there was and what that generated in additional revenue, and then what that cost us because of that additional revenue, revenue sharing and state aid on the school side. So, that may be useful background just for those to answer that question, because it's something we come into, and it's pretty complicated, but it's interesting to understand those dynamics, because it kind of answers that first question of, well, if the state says we have more value and we're collecting more in taxes, both because we have new building, but also because the property values are rising, then why isn't that money just here to plow back right into the schools? And I think that'd be worth us maybe including in the background material.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a little bit more of a likely scenario. This, this is that if we, if that mill rate that we just talked about goes up 3% per year. So, this next year that we're looking at, if the mill rate goes up 3%, it would go from 848 to 873. All those valuation factors stay the same, the allocation stays the same, but we'd see a $5.6 million drop in state revenue this year. We'd see a $6.5 million drop in revenue the year after, and a $5.2 million drop in revenue after that. Now, you can see that last line there that says minimum receiver. What that means is your local value raises more than your total cost of education. So, at that point, the state kind of says, nope, you're on your own. That doesn't mean you don't get any state aid, there are laws around what the state has to provide for you. Some of it's special education, some of it's a percentage of your school debt that the state had approved at another time. I actually just heard it from our attorney, Greg M., today, that there's legislation out right now defining, or redefining what a minimum receiver would be. So, he suggested not even trying to get into projecting what it would be for us at that time and to kind of hold off and wait. But I just wanted to put it out there that that is not very far in the future for us, in which case, we would be relying almost wholly on property taxes. And there are other communities near us where that happens, where their value does not offset, or offsets the total cost of education. Raymond and RSU 14, Wyndham Raymond is one of those communities. A lot of our down east communities with the very high property values are in that boat. So, I just wanted to kind of let you know that. So, I do, there's a bold underlined statement on the bottom here that this is a projection only based on accumulators. We essentially took the approved FY 2019 budget and applied some accumulators to that, meaning, you know, what do we expect cost of living for salaries to be? What do we expect benefits to go up by? What do we think utility rates are going to increase to? So, it's accumulators based on very large chunks of money. It does not take into account, you know, individual unions or that kind of thing. I will put, there's a note on here, this has been updated from what we talked about with our finance committee last Tuesday. Our main PERS rates just came out, and they're increasing the local portion by almost 5% for the teacher group. So, it's, it increased about $100,000 over my projection from Tuesday, which bumped the overall expenditure increase to 3.9%. So, things that this does include are those accumulators that I just talked about. It also includes our BFOF debt service year one, $972,000. That was supposed to be in last year's budget, we actually pushed the borrowing back, so it's just assumed right now it's in this year's budget coming up. So, that's about $4.25 million expenditure increase on our current $110 million budget. So, if we lose that just flat $3.4 million that we just talked about, that in state aid, taxes would increase 6.2%. If we lost that mill rate increasing at 3.5%, which is what happened last year, our taxes would increase 9.2%. So, and this is sort of a steady, you know, don't change anything else, these are not new investments, these are not, this is not universal pre-K, these are just kind of, just doing what we're doing right now. Yes.
Easy one. What is BFOF?
Sorry, Buildings For Our Future.
Thank you.
The elementary school bond.
Yes. And there is an appendix, I believe, in the back that has that debt schedule, that this was talked about a few years out. This is assuming we borrow the $64 million and even increments over six years.
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks. Are those tax increases just the school side?
Just the school side.
And so, would that be the property tax increase on a home, or would we halve that for the impact on a home? I just think, because these numbers, I remember getting this being confusing during the budget season last year, sort of half of it comes from the city side, approximately, half from the school side. And so, I just, since this is up here, we should just clarify, does that mean 4.6% on the bottom would be the impact on a home, is what you're projecting there?
Assuming city taxes don't go up at all.
Right, right, right. But yes, which we all know they have the same accumulators, but nonetheless, I just want to make sure we understand.
So, this is school only. This is not indicative of the budget that will be going forward in March, I'm just going to keep saying that. Did you get that? So, over the past few years, when we've been working in the city finance committee, I believe the city's trying to keep their tax impact at 2.5%. And so, we figured, you know, right now, knowing what we know about state aid, what does that look like for us if we're going to do that? So, if the mill rate were to stay flat, I did this on a tax levy increase. So, if the mill rate were to stay flat, I did this on a tax levy increase, because even though our revaluation isn't happening right away, the valuation is changing a little bit, so it's hard to talk about just tax rate. So I'm talking about the total tax needs that the school has. So if we were to have a flat mill rate, and we only got a 2.5% tax increase, we would actually only see an increase over our current year budget of $975,000. And from that projection that I just showed you, we'd need to cut $3.3 million from that to have a 2.5% tax increase. If our mill rate on the state side goes up, which means we lose more revenue, our change from last year's budget would be $231,000, or $4 million over the projection that we just showed. And then finally, that 3.5% increase was the increase we saw last year. We would actually need to drop from our current year budget, so we would need to take what we're paying in 2019 and reduce it by 1.6 million to have a 2.5% tax increase. Or, if we were going to look at that projection, we'd need to cut almost $6 million from that number, to have a 2.5% tax increase. Okay. So this next set of slides are from our template that we got from our consultants, and it's really just a baseline to look at how our costs have grown over the last 10 years. And I will say that '09 through 2012, there are some other funding sources in there. They had the RRA funds, which were the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that you may remember, where there were funds dedicated to schools, and some of our local funding was offset with that federal funding. So I did include that, because otherwise, it really skewed the numbers. So you can see in 2009, on just wages, so that's all salaries, teachers, ed techs, support staff, administration, everybody, we spent about $8,600 per student. And then last year, we were spending almost $9,900 per student. So in 10 years, that went up 14%. Now, I don't think this will, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you?
No, you're fine.
How does that compare to just a sort of CPI accumulated over that number of years? So in other words, it looks like a big number, but I'm wondering if that's not adjusted for inflation.
So, we looked at this on the northeastern CPI, which includes all of New England, which was just under 8%. So, Hubert and I talked through this today, actually, and there's a, there's a Boston Metro CPI that is much higher. I don't think we're quite at that level, but I also was telling the superintendent that I also don't believe we're probably at the New England level. I think there's a lot of rural activity that's sort of thrown in there. There's obviously Vermont, New Hampshire, Northern Maine, a lot of regions where costs aren't increasing as much. So, I'm going to bench that, benchmark that against the Boston region as well, and we'll see what they both look like. And I'm assuming we're going to fall somewhere in the middle of those two things. So, it is something we looked at. It didn't really match up with what we expected it to look like, so we're going to look into it a little bit further. But that's something that the Davis demographics people had suggested to us, so we are going to work on that.
Great. So this 14% is just real numbers, and it's not adjusted?
Correct.
And then at some point, when you get the, when you get those numbers, we'll see what that looks like.
We'll have a graph that shows.
Thank you.
So this next part is all benefits. I don't think this will surprise anyone. Benefits costs have increased fairly drastically over the last 10 years, from about $1,700 per student to about $2,700 per student, so an increase of 57% over 10 years.
Is there a main driver of that increase?
Some of it is the shift in retirement costs. So the state used to wholly pay for retirement for all of our teachers and ed techs, and now they don't. So one of the things I mentioned a few slides ago was that increase is going up about 5%. So it started at zero. This last year, just for comparison, the district paid 3.97% in for all of those individuals, and this upcoming year will be 4.16%. So, it's slowly kind of getting pushed back to us. That and health insurance, dental, and those have gone up. So utilities, repairs, and facilities costs have actually stayed sort of flat. They kind of jump around. Part of the reason it looks like they jump around is the way that the state makes us report these figures. Sometimes they're in schools, other times they're at the central level, so it's kind of hard to follow them around. But it went from about $780 to $966. So while it's a 23% increase, it's a relatively, it's a smaller part of the total pie. Same thing goes with transportation. Our transportation costs for the size are not what you would likely expect them to be. For example, we were, when we were looking at the Davis demographics numbers for, I think, the Butler School District, that's one of the examples in there you can look through, and their transportation costs per student are much higher than ours. So this is actually somewhere that we do relatively well on this. So, even though it went up 54%, I mean, we're looking at $100 per student. So debt service, and again, I was actually surprised by this look. Our debt service per student has gone down. That doesn't mean it's not going to go up again. We know that there's planned increases coming. We also just got Hall School Online in 2019, so those, that data's not showing here. So with Hall School and our Buildings For Our Future debt accumulating for the next six years, that will go up. And then finally, is this really?
Excuse me. Mr. Brenneman, do you have a question on that? It looks like you were just about.
No, I had a question on transportation.
Okay, go ahead. You can go back.
By having high school students take the metro, that save us money or increase the budget for transportation?
We looked at this before. It did not save money. So, there was no, we did not decrease, as you can see, you know, there was no decrease in, you know, the spending for transportation, and that contract is going to continue to rise as fares rise. But it also hasn't, you know, it hasn't significantly added to our costs, and there's lots of other values from being able to do that, that we've, you know, prioritized and said that it's, it's a good thing. So, and the other thing that it did is it enabled us to make transportation for elementary and middle school students better, because we didn't have to deploy staff and buses to transport kids to the high school, for the most part. I mean, we still do some special education busing to the high schools, but for the most part, you know, kids are on public transportation. Our contract went up some this year, and is expected to go up significantly for next year, because Metro is working on a fare increase, and that will be passed on to us.
By significantly, how much do you mean? Percentage?
Do you remember, is it like, it's, I want to say it's like $50,000?
I mean, our total contract's like 225, so 250. So in the grand scheme of the budget, it's, I don't expect it'll cause
Okay.
significant waves. So last, the last category is this other, I know that's not a helpful category, but that's essentially everything else. So it's supplies and contracted services and software fees. And I can, I can say that this is being driven not by supplies. In fact, I think our supply budget goes down every year, as a percentage of our total budget. This is likely mostly software maintenance, tech fees, and contracted services is what's driving these increases. As we sort of move to more digital platforms, we're seeing a lot more in the, in the, not transportation, the technology fees. So, that's likely what's driving these increases, but again, overall, not huge numbers in the grand scheme of our per student costs. So, one more slide please. So this last slide's really sort of the important one, looking at our cost drivers. You'll notice it went down from '09 to '10. Some of that was other federal funding that we were able to kind of move some things around. But essentially, we went from $13,000 per student to about 15.5. You can see sort of the individual years that things increased a lot. There were some years that there was a very minimal increase. So from, in the last 10 years, our overall increase per student has gone up 20%. And the student population in that 10-year period has down 3%, but you can also see within those that there's been fluctuations from year to year. So it's not that it was steadily up or steadily down, it's sort of been back and forth. So, these are just sort of a visual representation of how those categories have stacked up. And then, even when you look at 2009 versus 2018, as a percentage of the total, things are not drastically moving around. Salaries and benefits are about 80% of our total budget. So really, it's just kind of that debt, sometimes is a bigger piece, and sometimes it's a smaller piece. The next piece is the comps. I don't know if you want to go through those.
Yeah, I'll go through this. Any other questions, or any questions on the historical look at the district? So, you know.
On the debt service, could we get additional years out, so we can know those numbers projecting out with the debt for Buildings For Our Future?
You have in your deck, the last page is a, is a projection, but it's not exactly what you're asking for, because it only shows you the four, the four school bond impact. It doesn't show you what, for example, it's going to be with Hall debt also, CIP borrowing, and so on. But that does provide a little bit of that picture, so I think that's why Alicia said that, you know, even though it's, it's dropped, it will definitely rise. Any other questions on that information? Thank you, Alicia. I just can't, I mean, the amount of stuff that you know about this is just overwhelming. So, so glad you're there to do that. So what we also wanted to do, this is something that we've shared in our community meetings, and was a big part of our budget presentation last year, but I think it's important, because not everybody was a part of those conversations, to sort of also ground, if you think of the other comparisons as us over time, this is us and our neighbors. And so, we just have a select number of slides in here that, that we thought would be helpful for you to see. And so, this is, you know, our comparison districts, and it's not, you know, people have asked, why is Wyndham not in there? Why is so-and-so not in there? These are the ones that we picked early in my tenure, primarily for, for assessment comparisons, and then we've just kept them, you know, as our standard comparisons. And they're, you know, districts that are surrounding area, and then others that are large urban-like districts. So that's why you'll see Lewiston and Bangor in these comparisons, while you'll see Bedford in there. Bedford has a population that's similar to ours in terms of free and reduced lunch and English language proficiency, and so that's why we've selected those districts. And so this, this first chart shows you a bunch of things, but it's sort of sorted around that fourth column, the general fund spending per pupil for FY19. And I think sort of the big takeaway from this is that, you know, and I think from all of them, that we're not out of sync with our comparison districts. Most districts spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 per student, and we're sort of smack in the middle of that. And, you know, the proposed tax rate, we included that in there. You obviously have to take into consideration, you know, that that is a, that's a moving target. You know, when reassessment is done, that rate will in all likelihood drop significantly, but it will still generate more dollars, because it will be against that bigger, you know, pie that actually is out there that we're not, that we're not able to tax against. But, you know, again, most people are between 10 and 12, and we're smack in the middle of that as well. The next slide, and I guess the other thing that would be helpful, back to this slide, is just to see the range of how much the percentage of the budget that is paid for by the state, which I think is also, is also helpful. So you see that, you know, Lewiston, you know, 75% of their total budget is funded by the state, 45% of Westbrook's, and so on, where, you know, we have 14% of ours. And there are other districts that receive even, even less than, than we do. So the other, this other slide is really designed to give you an idea of the fact that, you know, Alicia spent a lot of time talking about what the state says you must spend, and so that's the allocation amount. That's the second column here. That's what the state says you're supposed to, to spend. And so, you know, last year, the state said we needed to spend $87 million. Most districts spend more than what the state requires. So think of the state's formula as the basic education, the minimum. You can't spend less than that by, by law. So, but most people spend more than that, and we are, you know, just like most people in that, you know, we spend 20% more than what the state required us to spend. And you can see that the amounts range significantly from, you know, Cape Elizabeth, where they spend what the state requires and then half, and, you know, Lewiston, where they spend just barely a little bit more than what the state requires them to spend. But we're sort of in the middle in that area as well. And then, this slide, some of you who were involved in the budget process will remember, we did an analysis at the category level. EPS, which is the Essential Programs and Services, has, as Alicia described, a set of drivers for, you know, how much they say that you're supposed to spend, and it's x number of dollars, you know, x number of dollars times, you know, the number of students that, you know, are assigned to a teacher. And so what we did is for each of those categories, so for teacher, for guidance council, or nurses, and you can read all of the others, you'll see the, what the DOE said that we should have, so that's the basic level of education, and then what we actually had last year. So you'll see the ones in red are where we have more than what the state required in those categories, and the ones in green is where we actually have less than what the state required. And the percentage is, you know, the percentage of the, of our total that is, you know, sort of represented by the, what the DOE. So, you know, that's, that's what that represents. I'm going fast, because I'm trying to, you know, I'm at 7:30, and I'm trying to keep us on time, and I think we're doing okay, but, you know, so don't feel like you can't ask questions. I tend to talk fast, and I'm sharing a lot of information, so if you feel that you want more time to process something, please let me know. Then the, I think the last comparison slide that we have is, you know, our teacher salaries. And we've shown you both the starting teacher and the experienced teacher pay rates. There's actually a change in the Westbrook one that I forgot to make, so, that, which sort of elevates them from where they currently are in that, in that slide. But, you know, again, these are the districts that we are competing with for, you know, the quality staff that work in the district, and so if somebody didn't work in Portland, they in all likelihood would work in one of these districts that are described here. So I think, you know, we need to remain competitive, and we feel that our salaries are competitive. They're not at the, you know, top, they're not at the bottom, but they're certainly, you know, in, in the ballpark, and, you know, allow us to continue to retain quality staff, you know, because of our, because of our pay. And, so that's it, in terms of all of the comps. And we're going to move into the last section of the agenda, which is talking about our timeline and what you can expect at different points. So before we do that, I don't know if there are any comments, or questions, or thoughts, additional background information that you may want to include.
And I will say, I understand that's a lot of information to give you if you don't hear it from me all the time. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, some of you do hear it from me all the time. So feel free to reach out to me directly if you have questions, if you need more information. I can give you probably way more information than you want, so please feel free to reach out to me.
Sure.
Thank you. I was wondering if there's a place where we could see the weighting for our different student demographics in Portland, and how that calculates into EPS?
Yes. Right now?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily right now, but maybe in the near future.
So that's the EPS weighting.
For English and Spanish learners.
And special ed. And maybe compared to other districts around us?
Ms. Cook?
Thanks. I just, I'm on the essential programs and services chart. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding or not understanding it, as the case may be. So the top line, teachers. The State Department of Education, thanks for the number of students we have, they recommend 407. Or I should say, they recommend the minimum they would expect would be 407 and a half. And so we have 84% more teachers than, okay, that's what I'm trying to under-
We have 16% more teachers.
I see.
Is that right?
That's what it's for.
We definitely don't have 84% more.
Okay. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to read these percentages and the 84 didn't quite seem to match up based on those numbers.
The way that that happens, so that's 407.5 divided by 48, 2.3. So this, when the state's calculating the total salaries that we get credit for, they calculate the total, which last year was $25 million, and they only give us 84% of that $25 million. So that's how the allocation adds up. So that's why it's 84. So it essentially takes the DOE number divided by the PPS number. So you can see on the bottom how it's actually higher than 100%. They give us more money than we would have otherwise gotten because we have less teachers. It's kind of a backwards way that they do it. The more teachers we report versus the number they say, the more we sort of get docked on the total that we get from the state.
Okay, so this percentage is not, is not the percentage I was thinking it was trying to report. So in other words, we have, you know, 70 more teachers than the baseline. And if we weren't to have those, it means our class sizes would be larger. Or we would not be offering certain topics and those kinds of things. I think it would be interesting to see where we are, and maybe that was in one of those slides, where we are compared to our neighboring districts and our comparison districts as to sort of student-teacher ratios. And I know that-
I do have that.
We do have that.
Yep, okay.
We did this, we did this analysis against the comparison districts. So, you know, which districts have a higher proportion of teachers than what the, the state, you know, says they should have, which, you know, and if I recall correctly, the only one where we topped the charts was in guidance councils and social workers. I think everywhere else, we were, you know, somewhere in the mix, but we were not the leader of the pack.
And with that guidance, that was going to be another question, is I would expect us to have more, you know, compared to some of our neighboring towns. So these numbers are just based on total number of students, not on any demographics or anything?
Correct. Just the flat number of students.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I was just going to concur with Councilor Cook. It might be good for us to have some footnotes as to how the numbers were derived because people that don't live and breathe this would look at that and say, wow, you have 84% more when you first glance. And we don't want to, especially going into budget season, people thinking these. And so I can see at first glance how people would think that. So I think it's really important that we really specify how we're coming up with these numbers and what they're relative to, so that the layman can understand it. Thank you.
Or even, even the counselors.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. So you have, and you have at your table an actual copy of this so that you can follow. But we're not really, you know, I'm happy to answer questions. This changes frequently, so this is as of last week, the project plan. And it obviously changes as things, you know, don't get done and, you know, we fall behind and things along those lines. But the dates are the critical, the critical point. The dates for the sessions is, I think, what's most important to our conversation here today. So what we did is we created a slide that just shows you exactly what it is that you can expect and, you know, roundabout when you can expect that. So obviously, today is today. We have two upcoming sessions, one in mid-November and one in early December. The mid-November one, as I discussed earlier, we will review the survey results. That's the sort of considerations for you and your work. And we will also, at that point, have a preliminary elementary capacity analysis. So that will be looking at our current and projected enrollment and against our current use of, of our buildings. In December, early December, so just basically two weeks later, we will have another meeting where we will add to that knowledge, the secondary capacity analysis. So that will also be to Ms. Cook's, to Councilor Cook's question earlier about, you know, the use, the programming of our high schools and middle schools, that will also be included as a part of that. So that's very much sort of background building and sort of like what we did today with the budget, but trying to dig deeper into around the facilities and, and our projected enrollments. And so, in the second session, which is scheduled for early January, we would have the preliminary enrollment projections. And that'll be an opportunity for us to work together to develop some conceptual scenarios based on all of the information that you will have at that point. So that will be an important session where we'll, we'll think through the process for that, but it will be one where we expect that you will be engaged in, you know, what-ifs and thinking through different possibilities. That will then lead to the session three, which will be in late January, because at that point, we will be operationalizing all of those what-ifs and coming back with preliminary scenarios and the associated costs. So what we could expect to potentially save from those different, from those different scenarios. In between that session and session four, if you go to the right, you see that there are community sessions, community engagement sessions that would take place between that. So that would be, it's sort of mocked up to be a single session, but, you know, knowing Portland, it will probably be 11. But it, it will be an opportunity for the public to hear from the commission around what some of those early recommendations are. And that'll be the vetting process, if you will, prior to finalizing those recommendations and submitting them to the board in late February. And obviously, that will be a public presentation from the commission to the school board with those, with, with the recommendations. So, so that's the general arc at a fairly specific level so that you know what you can expect to receive in each of those sessions and the kinds of dialogue that we'll be having during each of those. So any questions about that? Yes, Ms. Moriarty?
Do we ever get any type of report about the comments that were made during the community forum?
That's some review survey results at the first session.
Okay, so then it's not just a survey that was done online, but also all the-
It's the survey with that. And I mentioned earlier, like, for example, the Island Institute turned in, you know, a set of considerations, things that they want to. So we will, you know, aggregate all of that and have a presentation at the next meeting where you will get all of that in addition to, you know, reams and reams and reams of stuff, so.
Are the dates that are on here for the next sessions, the actual fixed dates? Are those representative?
Those are fungible dates that will, you know, depending on, you know, what works for people and all of that. So they're intended to be there because the software requires you to have a hard date, but it doesn't, not necessarily. We will do a doodle poll to, you know, once we lock in that, you know, the contractor can deliver those pieces and those dates, we'll do doodle poll to see when most people are available for that and try to do it. But you can look at that and get a sense that, you know, that will be somewhere around the middle of November, you know, sometime around the early part of December for the next, for the next two meetings. So we'll try to put some dates out there for that.
And for the, the background documents to support each of those meetings, they will, just like this time, come out Thursday, Friday before the meeting?
Yeah, if you look at the, you know, at the detailed plan, you'll see that, you know, those are always in like two weeks ahead of schedule. So that, you know, we can have internal conversations, try to figure out, you know, how that gets presented that you and I, you know, can work on. And then that will, it will come out like it did sort of a Friday before meeting or, you know, three days before.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gray?
I know, looking around the room, that there isn't anyone here from the Portland Legislative Delegation. I think I'd suggest to you to, once we get past the election on next Tuesday, that you make a specific invitation to the delegation to send someone here on a regular basis. I think it'd be valuable for them to see this particular sausage being made.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Proposed sausage.
Other questions or suggestions?
Yes, Ms. Cook?
Maybe a few more seats around the table next time?
Yes, we, we will add another set of tables on each end so that we can spread out a little bit more.
Thank you.
I know, we're very close. It's okay.
Yes, Ms. Thompson?
I was just wondering, with regards to, we have the Liceth starting up and we have the BFOF Building Committee with that. And I would say, think that that, our decisions on the building committee for the BFOF will also make impacts on this. So it's probably important as well, if, if we can, is have links to our work there so people can segue to look at some of that because it's going to have implications, implications on what we're doing here. So it's really important, I think, that they see all of that because we have a lot of facility stuff going on right now and they're all going to go together, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Right? I think that's a wrap.
Yeah. One, one last search for any, I would specify any questions that would take some research would be particularly helpful right now because it'll give the staff and the consultants an opportunity to bring it to us in a future meeting. Is there anything else that hasn't been mentioned that folks would want to see? Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Not a particular, not any more data at this point, but Arena, did I hear you say we're going to do a doodle poll for the next meeting or are we going to decide that tonight? Doodle poll. Okay, thank you.
I said no decisions tonight, so. Decide on the norms. Yes?
Is it possible, I have a lot of community members asking me for kind of the high-level summary of what's happening here. And short of, you know, going through all the details of this presentation, is there a way we could have kind of summarized information to share with community members so that they understand, you know, what's going down, what's going up, why we have to do this? I also have some people questioning, well, last year, the four bonds were passed and why are they, you know, going, why is that decision being undermined right now? And so, you know, I've begun to understand pieces of this now, which is great and I appreciate it very much, but just wondering if we could get the layman's version perhaps to share with others? That would be really helpful.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the district comparisons that you've done. Is it possible to get, I just think it would be interesting to see the effect of the valuation of the state subsidies for these towns as well? Because are we the only city in the state that's facing this issue?
No.
I mean, at the drastic level.
Right.
Yes. But, I mean, the South Portland's and the Scarborough's, we're seeing more commercial development there getting into, but their piece of the pie is already very, very small. So to them, it's, you know, they get a smaller piece of nothing. I mean, they get like between 1% and 5% of their total budget from the state.
South Portland gets 12, but not that much less than we do. Yes, Ms. Moriarty?
So in the past, the board has worked collaboratively with some of the other districts and their boards to send letters to the state to work on a joint action. So I understand what your point, your point is, duly noted, is, is important one because you're right, it's not just our district. And, and I think we'll, as a board, continue to look at those opportunities as well to collaborate with other boards.
And, and, you know, if I can just add to that, and Ms. Moriarty asked earlier if we're having conversations about revenue here, we're not, but those conversations are ongoing and will continue to be ongoing, you know, with the Legislative Delegation, with other districts that are in, you know, similar situations to ours, to make sure that we are, you know, looking at different revenue possibilities alongside with, you know, the work of this group is to figure out, are there cost savings? Are there different ways of doing things that will save us money? But we are also looking at revenue, revenue options. And that just doesn't move very quickly, so.
Great. Well, thank you for your time. You can spend the balance of it looking through the materials and all the background documents. It'll, we've got a lot to cover and looking forward to seeing you in November.